You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the May fifteen twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access la port county dot org.
Okay, thank, thank you. It's five oh four. All this workshop to order seems like I guess there's two only two individuals concerned about the replacement of equipment at the fire department. So we'll let the fire department make their presentation and then go to questions after that. You guys want to make your presentation?
Good evening, council members. Mr. Preszulinski, like we talked about the other night at the council meeting, that was just a brief description of what we were looking at. I didn't mean for it to get into a long discussion on it. That's not what it was meant for. So what we're looking at is to the committee met, the truck committee, apparatus committee, let's call it. They've met several times. Captain Joe Zerbs is the head of that, is in charge of that committee. They basically decided that the twenty fifteen Rosenberg T Rex, we need to look at replacing that with a new aerial. We've been looking at some Pierce aerials. Our backup is a ninety five Pierce hundred foot aerial unit right now. So I can let Captain Zerbs talk about the committee if you want, or if you want to just ask questions.
Go ahead and make your presentation so it's on, it'll be recorded.
You have the paperwork from the other day or not?
I do not bring, I did not bring those.
Do you guys still have your paperwork from there? Do we give them paperwork?
Yes, they emailed it.
You have that? Okay, perfect.
I've got mine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you want a copy of it? There's extra copy.
No, there's some at the end. Counsel, Captain Service, I've been tasked to head up the truck committee by Chief Legault. We have several members in the committee from young guys to older gentlemen that have been on department for a while. We have came to a consensus, as I stated before, to come back to something that's tried and true for the department, and that is the Pierce apparatus. And we went to a different company for a little bit, went to Rosenbauer. We see the issues we've had with them, as I had stated at the council meeting, the service through Sentinel with the Rosenbauer has not been the greatest. Pierce has always been there. Or McQueen, which is the dealer, they've been there, they help us. If they can answer a question to get things done where they don't even have to come out, they'll answer questions, they take care of it. Their service has been second to none on maintaining the vehicles we've had from them in the past. It is imperative that we be getting a replacement schedule for all our apparatus to remain in compliance with N F P A nineteen eleven and to ensure the safety of the citizens of Michigan City and the firefighters by keeping reliable fire apparatus in service. Fire, fire apparatus and municipal departments have recommended lifetimes because of frequency and intensity in use and the weights that they carry. As we have stated before, the current apparatus, the west side engine one on Eleventh Street is a twenty eighteen Rosenbauer. Engine two will be replaced in the next couple of months with that twenty twenty three Pearson Forcer. Engine three is a twenty nineteen Rosenbauer, which is out at the airport. Engine four is a twenty thirteen Pierce, which will need to be replaced approximately twenty twenty eight. And we're looking at now between two to three year build time, actually kind of pushing up a little bit more than that because of the backlog that Pierce has. Our current frontline aerial is the nineteen ninety five ladder. The tower one, which is supposed to be our frontline aerial, is actually down again, is out of service at this moment. We have a spare of one truck, which is actually in service right now because engine two blew a turbo the other day. So there's with these O sevens, you see this stuff's coming up more and more also. And then our nineteen ninety nine short stick aerial is not even roadworthy at this time. And that was deemed by an inspection that we're looking to have done on the twenty thirteen Pierce dash this year to see what its longevity of life is. Quint, yes, sir. Yes, but we hold on to it. Look, we're, we have one spare, well, actually, we have no spares. That is our spare right now. That is the only extra truck we have in the fleet at the moment. We could pump with it, we could, we could pump with it potentially, but it is not good to be on the roads continuously.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. And I mean, why do you say that, that it shouldn't be on the road all that much? I mean, but let me, let me ask, is it unsafe? Is it unsafe to operate this?
We, we have deemed that we're not using it, no. And that would be chief, Deputy Chief Frank Rebeck has has made that statement that we're not going to use that truck right now. So.
So it's unsafe.
Correct. It's not, it's not usable, not usable right now.
Okay.
I don't know the exact details as far as what he's looking at, as far as why he deemed it unusable, but it's deemed unusable right now.
Okay, so it's unsafe for the firefighters to use, and it's unsafe for the public to be driving it up and down the road.
We're not, we're not using it, correct.
So you're not using, so it's not even a considered a spare.
Not necessarily.
If you can't use it.
Yeah, Captain Zerbs is not aware of all this. Deputy Chief Frank Rebeck handles all that, so.
Okay. So do we have any spares?
We have the one sitting at central maintenance right now. It should be fixed momentarily. They are waiting for fitting. No, that, that is the two thousand seven.
What is that? Is that a pumper truck or?
Engine, engine, right. And I will speak, I know Captain Zerbs mentioned about the T Rex. I have information that I'm gonna talk about after him on the T Rex, so.
Okay.
I don't know where you were, need me to finish? Please, you let me know.
Yes, sir. So once again, as I said before, twenty twenty eight, the engine four will have to be replaced in which once this aerial that we're looking at is done, we're gonna have to start getting things in line for bedding the new engine four. Just making sure you're caught up with us, councilman.
Yeah.
Okay. As chief had already stated, truck committee decided that the T Rex is unreliable. Prices keep rising with inflation. Last year alone, prices have gone up a total of thirteen percent. And that's on Pierce's end and across the board. There's, every manufacturer is a little bit different to purchase the new aerials. After shopping around with different manufacturers as well as touring other departments to see demonstrations of their apparatus, we decided to go back to once again what has been tried and true for us and for the city of Michigan City. The committee has narrowed down the field to going back with Pierce at this time. I'm actually, at this point, right now, I'm gonna turn it over to chief to give you the information on what's going on with the tower.
Yep, yep, it's not a matter. Let me hold on to that. Yep. Okay, so a brief description, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can because it's going to become lengthy. Immediately when we got it back from St. Louis to have repairs done to it, we had issues with it. I called, personally called Rick Feister from Rosenbauer Company themselves up in Minnesota. He's the number one aerial guy. He knows those trucks. He's their number one guy when it comes to the aerials. Service and training on those trucks. So I immediately called him. I said, I need to get you down here. I want you to come work on the truck. He said, no problem. He's gonna make arrangements. He came down as soon as he could, which was within a week, I believe. Him and his, his number one technician, they came down to figure out the computer issues, the codes that have been thrown on it. The guys were trained with it. Actually, we couldn't train at first with it. They fixed it, and then it started throwing code. So I said, I just need you to come down, Rick, and he came down, worked on it. He believes he's got it figured out. We put it in service. The guys were training with it. No codes have been thrown that I know of. Then there became a issue of a water leak was spotted. So we called Sentinel, the local service guy out of South Bend. He came looked at the water leak, and this was Wednesday, this last Wednesday. So he came within a couple of days of Chief Rebeck asking him to get here. Thursday, he, he worked on it Wednesday, I believe, contacted Frank Thursday. This was Wednesday afternoon, I believe. Don't hold me to this. Thursday, he contacted Frank, I'm sorry, Chief Rebeck instructed, you know, gave him the details and said, Chief Rebeck said, well, you need to talk to the chief about it. He called me Friday morning. Basically, on the aerial waterway swivel, this is where the water goes up into the aerial unit. And of course, it has to rotate three hundred and sixty degrees, so they call it a swivel. There's a O ring seal on this, on this unit. They call it the swivel unit. It also contains all the hydraulics for this truck that go up into the aerial unit. Well, they designed this unit with a, he called it a weepole. It's kind of like a water pump. There's a weepole. Once the seal goes on the water pump, then it leaks out to let you know what's going on. That's how he described it to me. So basically, this technician called Rick Pister, Feister, and talked to him about it, just to confirm that he knew exactly what the problem was. And Rick said, yes, your, your main O ring seal is now not working properly. It's, it's blown or whatever he called it. So it's spewing out water from that weepole. The recommendation is not to use the truck for a water aerial device. They said you can if you have to in emergency situation, but limit the water because they cannot confirm a hundred percent that it wouldn't damage or, or not damage, but it wouldn't wouldn't put, well, no, it, he says that part's okay. He said, now it's relieving the pressure. It's not really a backup pressure. It's just to let you know that now there's a possible condition of contaminating hydraulic system because the hydraulic system is right there next, next to it. I don't fully understand that part, but they're saying they can't guarantee us if we continue to use it the way it is, which you can, but you're gonna have a chance of contaminating the hydraulic system. We don't want that, obviously. So now leading into the bad part of all this is the cost is, it's up there, but it's not unreasonable. I mean, it's not crazy money. But the lead time for this part is six months. They don't keep these on, they, they make them, you know, too, as they build the aerials. And actually, it's made in Sweden. So that's where we're at. We're looking at, yeah, a major, major issue with the T Rex, thirty five thousand, give or take. He said, this is what you're looking at, thirty five thousand. For, for the parts and labor, I believe. I haven't confirmed that. Like I said, this all happened Friday. We're working on the, the service guy that I've been dealing with through Sentinel is, he said, let me make some phone calls this week. He's gonna try and figure some things out for us. He said, I'll get back with you midweek, if not late in the week for sure. I'm waiting for that phone call. He had a couple ideas as far as maybe finding somebody in the United States to look at it. I don't know if I like that idea. Rick Pfister actually said he has replaced one on one other truck that actually froze and cracked. It wasn't the O ring. He said he would not himself take this thing apart to try to fix it. It's just too complicated. So we have some decisions to make, and that's what's gonna lead into, there's some other options that we have. I can go into those if you want to hear them.
Sure.
Because it's recorded, so.
Awesome.
Want to know if they can find it.
The, so Friday afternoon, we decided to call our Pierce rep, the salesman that we've been working with on the other engine and what these guys have been dealing with on this mid mount aerial unit. Ask him if there's anything that's coming down the line, or if he knows of anything, you know, that would be available to us for an aerial unit. He said he didn't know. The list just came out last week. He'll, he'll check on it and get back with me. He got back with me Friday evening by email. Pierce does have a hundred foot aerial demo, or I call them spec trucks. They don't really get demoed anymore because they get sold before they even get built. So there's a spec truck coming through Pierce manufacturing. It's a hundred foot aerial rear mount, which is basically identical to the ninety five, but it's a twenty twenty three. It's the same, same, basically same truck. It's a basic aerial unit as our ninety five Pierce aerial. It's not anything fancy or, you know, like the, the T Rex. It doesn't have the articulating boom or anything like that. So it's a basic hundred foot aerial Pierce ladder truck. That's coming through the assembly line here, and it should be done in late August, early September, he said. So that's an option. Our second option is to use our ninety five aerial for six months until we get the T Rex fixed.
How much is the new truck? The new aerial. Pardon? Yeah, how much is the new aerial?
That is just under two million dollars. It'll be actually just a hair over two million if we do our paint scheme and lettering. It'd be two million, ten thousand dollars is what he said. It would be right at that.
Lot of gold leaf?
No.
No gold leaf?
Yes, but not.
Gold leaf on a fire.
Too, but.
All right. I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If I may. So the Pierce, what would you call it in the, the, what's on the line coming down the line?
I have all that.
What's their, what's their spec name for it?
Let me, let me get it out here. Yeah. I have, I did print it out.
Well, we'll just, I'll just, I'm just gonna.
I got, I got.
Aerial.
So it's a Pierce Enforcer puck, one hundred foot rear mount platform. Bid number thirteen thirty eight, stock number thirty nine one thirty.
Okay. So you're saying that's two million?
Exactly, yes.
If we, if we act on it soon.
That would have to be.
What kind of timeframe did he give you?
That will be done in late August, early September, this year, this year.
What did he say about a deposit on it?
That works first come, first served. And that's what we went through with the engine, the last engine that we did. You have to speak for it as soon as you can, otherwise you take the chance on, there, there's no money down. You don't have to put any money down. You pay for it when it arrives. I just need to be able to sign for it basically and give them appeal. That's how we did it with the engine. So I have to run it through the process, you know, and, and be able to sign a purchase order, purchase agreement with them, and then show them appeal.
So.
I haven't, I haven't presented this to the truck committee yet. We have a truck committee meeting tomorrow. Emergency one, just to discuss this, to see if they're even interested in this. I leave it up, I mean, I'll make the ultimate decision, but I want to include them and let them.
Well, let me say this. I gotta speak as an elected official. At some point in time, if we have to do something, and if we gotta make a decision, then we gotta make a decision because we don't need nineteen ninety five as, we can use it as, it shouldn't really be a backup at this point. And you know, we have had many, many thorough discussions about this T Rex, and I'm not gonna get into them tonight. But I will say this, this is a disgusting situation. Disgusting.
I absolutely agree.
Because now the people and not only residents, but visitors to our city are in jeopardy with, with, with having, with having, you know, coverage. And I know we got coverage because you can make the call and we've done that.
We, we have never been without an aerial unit in, in operation except for limited two times. So we the T Rex is obviously not in service, but we do put that ninety five in service.
Right.
Okay.
I understand.
I just want to make sure everybody is aware that we keep our aerial in service. Unfortunately, it is a ninety five.
I don't want to get into all that right now, but we'll get into that if we have to. My, my thing is this, is we probably can find them, we probably can find the money, and the thing is, is what the, you know, what, what are we gonna do? What, what are we gonna do about this T Rex problem? You know, we, you know, we talked about it and trying to do something with this Rosenbauer company. This is getting, you know, it's, this is saddening.
I, I am planning on calling them actually Wednesday. I wanted to wait for Chief Rebeck to be back in the office. He's off tomorrow. We're gonna call on Wednesday. I ran out of time today and Chief Rebeck had to leave also. So we are gonna discuss it with them. There's some things in it. There's still a warranty, but not much of it.
Right.
No, I think I sent all that information to you.
Is, is there a is there any way that this truck at Pierce, this aerial can be modified to make it, you want it to articulate? Are you talking about the
No.
Basket? It's gonna have basket, right?
Yes, it has. It's, it's identical, I would say.
To the ninety five.
It's very simple. Yeah, it's the replacement to the ninety five. I know it's a lot of years difference, but if you look at it, it's, it's got the basket up front, just like the ninety five.
Ninety five has been pretty dependable.
Yes, it has.
Yes. Okay.
So, but it, it will not have the articulating boom like the T Rex, no.
All right.
Is that what you're asking, I think?
All right.
Okay.
Well, I guess we we're between a rock and a hard spot. The whole thing, other thing is what's the price tag on these other vehicles at this point in time? And I guess we have to look at looking at a schedule of replacement and
Correct.
And, and actually present, present something financially on the how we're gonna put this money on the side because, you know, there's needs that you guys have in, in the force department, and they got leases coming up that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're gonna have to discuss that also.
Our next, like Captain Zerbs said, the next truck would be the twenty thirteen engine four. That's the next oldest after we replace the engine two this summer with the new Pierce.
So.
Am I, I said that correctly, twenty thirteen, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have that inspected. It's ten years old this year. I want to have that inspected, and they can give us an idea of how it looks as far as, we should get another five years out of it, I hope. So we're looking at five years down, if we plan, we want to start that process in about two and a half, two and a half years to replace that truck because it's gonna take, hopefully that, that they can make the trucks faster than they can right now, but right now it's, if you get, they call it an accelerated build, it's twenty four months. Twenty four to twenty eight, I think he said. The normal build is thirty six to forty two months right now is what, and that's what we'd be looking for at this mid mount Pierce aerial that the truck committee had already started looking at. You're looking at thirty six to forty two months.
Since you brought that up, chief, about the mid mount, what's the is there a big advantage with this mid mount besides being shorter, a shorter wheelbase and?
Correct. The biggest advantage is a shorter wheelbase.
Is that their answer to a quint?
No, no, not, not, not at all. It's just you can, you can fit that aerial. Say the, the hundred foot rear mount has three sections to the arrow, you know, that, that tells about. The mid mount has five sections so they can keep the truck short. Correct, correct, yep. That's a good, good word to describe.
How do you guys look at this on, because I remember when that quint was bought and that was for the fact of Beach Walk to get in and out of there. Is this, is this apparatus gonna be able to get in and out of some of those areas, or what are we gonna got? What, what do we have going with Beach Walk here on?
It's getting worse and worse. It has gotten, I, I would say worse than it used to be actually, you know, with the buildup of it. You're, you're gonna be limited. In the summertime, you're probably not gonna get an aerial in there, you know, with the parking. It's just, it's just the way it is. Doesn't matter how good it turns.
So then we're gonna just be up to restoring with the.
Well, we'll get it there if we can. You know, it's, it's just, that's just the way it is out there. Sure, he, he knows more about the mid. He's done more research on that.
All right.
There are pros and cons to both, really.
Okay.
There's pros to the rear mount, and there's pros to the mid mount.
All right.
So along with being up at Pierce recently, we were shown the different amounts that they have. And there is one exceptionally high advantage of this mid mount, well, two. Number one, the low clearance. It's the same height as our pumps that are out there. So it's gonna get through most places. The other thing is they have what is called a Tac Three rear steer on them. It's not where somebody's driving the rear of the truck. Instead of dragging tires like, how many sets of tires have we had on that T Rex? This thing has the larger tires like we're on the front, and they'll actually turn. So it can turn where a pump goes and hold the same corners and everything. So it's a lot more maneuverable than what a normal aerial is, like the ninety five or this stock truck that's coming down the line right now that we can potentially jump on. That unit, it shouldn't, it shouldn't really be compared to the quint. A big difference between the quint and what these aerials are, the quint was a straight stick. There was no bucket. It was only seventy five foot long. Instead of sixty five, thank you, sixty five, thank you, I'm sorry. It was sixty five foot long. And then it only had single rear wheels, so it was like a pump still. It didn't have the dual. So that's another big difference between the quint. It's quite a bit shorter than what any of those aerials are. Because of how Pierce remanufactured this mid mount, they were able to But because of how Pierce remanufactured this mid-mout, they were able to suck the ladder, cause normally the mid-mounds had the bucket overhanging in the back. So that's that much extra swing that you have. They were able to make their ladders come in negative over the center point. So there's nothing over the back. So it cut literally like six, eight foot off the back of these trucks, easily. Alright. And then on top of it, um, because it has such, uh, uh, like Chief was saying, it has them five flies, they're shorter. So basically, it has a twenty-foot span on the side, but we could still put it down into the canal. Real easily, like to do a rescue situation.
Yeah.
Kinda like with the articulating boom, it can go negative, plus you can tip the truck even more. So it is, is a real, and I don't know if you guys watched the videos that I had sent out to everybody, but it is really, uh, a smart idea, you know, which would help us even.
In the basin.
Yes, down in the basin.
Right, it is dual, very dual purpose.
Yeah.
Multi-faceted.
Right, it, it could help us more around than what we think. But you can get so much closer to the truck, you can get, uh, closer to the edge of the road to, for, uh, operations and stuff, cause your traditional rear mounts, you have to be so far away in order to swing the boom around just to get to the building. So like, you'd have to be almost across, you know, like for the boulevard to reach the sidewalk on the east, the north, east side, you have to be on the west side of the road.
Yeah, Captain, could you send that video out again? I don't remember ever getting a copy of it.
It was, it was in the very end of the PowerPoint present, presentation, but I will, I will send it back out to you guys. And actually, I do have a, another presentation on flash drive that Pierce has sent me strictly about that truck.
Strictly about this truck?
About the mid-mout, yes, not the rear mount, the mid-mout. So the rear mount will be exactly the same as our ninety-five, just newer, the mid-mout with that. Because they call it a scrub angle, you can hit more of a building from one point than what you can with, uh, traditional aerial.
Gotcha. Okay, and then one more question. Uh, is the hundred-foot ladder aerial, is that enough for what Michigan City needs?
The max you can go is one fifteen.
Okay.
So, and that's the T-Rex.
Okay.
Uh, I was actually, tillers may go longer, but weren't, there's no way Michigan City's gonna have a tiller, those trucks are way too big. That's like driving some eyes around here.
Okay.
A hundred-foot is your.
Exactly.
Yes.
In city.
Yeah, and that's your basic, I mean, that's what Chicago has, e- everybody has them. Cause they won't make them bigger than that.
Okay, okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know that.
No, that isn't.
Then the other thing with these, this new, uh, ladder truck, I guess it'll be, I mean, width-wise, you should be able to get up and down all city streets, like Hendrix Street.
No wider than what we have.
All these tight streets where people are parked at?
No, no wider than what we have currently.
Okay.
Um, the only downside of Beachwalk is streets weren't made very well in there. You can't even get a car through there during the summer.
You know, and, and maybe I'm glad you brought that up, does that, that raises a question with me. You know, like with the planning department, and, uh, the planning commission, when they bring these projects up, you know, do they ever consider, even consider the fire department to be involved? I mean, do you guys look at the, the plans that come to the city and you guys go, yeah, we can get trucks out there.
And that would be, that was the world bill, uh, the administration asking, and obviously back then, it was totally different administrations, it was totally different council, you know, than what, what, what we have now. But, um, and again, that, that would have been honestly, people that are all retired from us right now.
Yeah.
That would have been involved in that, so.
Yeah.
That would make sense, but that's for them to answer, honestly, cause I'm not administration, I cannot answer that kind of a question.
Yeah, and, and I'm not being critical, all I'm saying is,
It makes sense, so.
Yeah, with the planning commission, when they're looking at a project, they should give it to the fire department and say, hey, this is what we're gonna have. Can you get a fire truck down there to take care of these houses? Now you go to Beachwalk now, just like Councilman Purblinsky said, you know, can you get a truck down there? And then the chief goes, well, maybe, you know, maybe we will.
Dunescape's another one. That Quint, you can't get in the Dunescape even with the pump that's being driven out there from one direction. You can't cut the corner, cause it goes negative to get into there. To turn the corner and get to that gate, you can't do it, you have to come from the other way. So, and then once you get up to the building, if it's not fully parked, it's the same idea. It's, it's real tight, and it is hard to maneuver in there for us. You know, obviously a squad, an ambulance is different, but for us,
Right.
It's difficult, but again, it's stuff that was not looked at way back when.
Okay, alright, thanks.
No problem.
Um, I'd like to make a comment about Beachwalk and, uh, Grey Ghost, or the White, whatever they wanna call it, is, uh, has been brought to my attention that, um, the, uh, uh, Grey Elephant, White Elephant, they own property back on the, uh, Espinon, they physically own property, and, and I don't know if we can do it, but we need to examine that to look at, to have a fire entrance acts, access for you guys on, uh, are you talking about on the north side of that building? Not for, not for Beachwalk, uh, or the, uh, Dunescape.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, to get into the Dunescape, I mean, it's crazy on the north end there, yeah.
Right. So, I'm gonna, I'm making, I'm making a note of that, and I think that we should remember that, to see if there's something we can do about that, to make it easier for you guys. Cause it would be remiss for us to, uh, ignore that, and try to do something with, with that property, because, um, I don't believe that that was brought up at that, that time, when that whole thing was planned and, and okay. And, and that's just like a lot of these things that are okay, that I don't, I don't think that it's looked at in the code for emergency access. I think that maybe we need to, I'm making a note of that, that we need to visit that, because they changed the code, and I, I will, uh, I will bring that, I will bring that to the legal team and to the, uh, planning director. And, uh, see what we need to do in the future, and for now.
Right, and, that, I mean, obviously, I think I could speak for a lot of the guys, that would be awesome, just because there's a lot of stuff that's not thought of.
Right.
When you go out and look at these places that are planned out.
Right.
And, no, I mean, you try to get into some of these places, we just can't. Like if we have to go to like Popeyes, it'd be kinda, pardon me, hell for us to get into Popeyes. You know, places like that, it's all just real tight. It's, it's absolutely insane, so. And until you drive one of them things, you don't, you don't get to understand and appreciate it.
I, I can appreciate it, for driving mobile equipment and, and, uh, handling mobile equipment. But I, I just, so what are you guys looking at, uh, uh, plan on, uh, putting money on the side? I gotta ask you this, are you gonna keep the, are you gonna, are we gonna work in a direction on making, uh, uh, Rosenbaum, or no?
Rosenbaum.
Rex.
Rosenbaum.
They're the ones that made the, cause it's two separate, uh, deals on the, uh, uh, T-Rex right now. The boom is one, one of, one of the issues, and the truck's a different issue, because
Yeah.
So people understand it, that the, the tower was made by the T-Rex Corporation, and then fitted onto the truck. I mean, a lot of people don't understand it, and I understand the history behind T-Rex just by watching how big that company is, and how it got formulated, and ta- ta- taken over on the, uh, History Channel, but we need to work in that direction that we spoke about in the past with our legal department on forcing them to, to do something, because I think that you guys should have or have developed enough of a, uh, uh, history on this truck that, you know, it's, to me, it's not completing its mission, and, and, uh, o- okay, with that, I wanted to ask, how long have they been making this Pierce mid, mid-mout? And any record on their performance?
They just said twenty eighteen, uh, unless, I didn't go up to the factory with them.
Councilman, they've been produced since twenty eighteen. Pierce has been making them a lot longer than that, but this particular one's twenty eighteen. There's over three hundred and fifty out there already, since twenty eighteen, when there are four hundred on order. So they're turning out, they say five to seven a week? Yeah, I think they're delivering five to seven a week.
So it's got a pretty good reliability schedule, and it's articulating, uh, rear.
Oh, well, that's, there's two different, there's two different ones, you need it with or without. So articulating rear is actually built for the mati- oh, excuse me, military. Um, Oshkosh is their president, or their parent company, which builds the six-by-sixes, the ARFs for the airport, and that came from them. So they brought that over from the military for this truck. And, uh, they have a number of them out there. It actually has fail safes in it, so it doesn't destroy, like, major components
Mm-hmm.
On it. There's a pin in there that if, like, they hit a curve real hard with the rear, instead of breaking other things, it shears this pin. You put a new pin in, well, whomever puts the new pin in, and it, but it shoots the wheel straight again. So now you're using it as normal, you know, it doesn't have the rear steer until the pin, pin is back in.
Okay, the, the reason I ask that is, is this being, is because of the history with the T-Rex. I think that's a real learning experience, and I think.
The, the Tac Three, which is the rear end, has been out for over, I think they said twenty to thirty years.
Okay.
Very, very, very minimal changes. It's been that tried and true. So, and that's, that's what comes, and now you're a single rear tire, two, two, two axles basically, but single rear tires instead doubles.
Okay, I, no, I, I understand, uh, Oshkosh and, uh, their performance and their heavy-duty, you know, uh, platforms, and, uh, so I, it was definitely has to be a proven system, and that, and it's good that we, we got that info.
Um, one of your things I do wanna mention about that mid-mout, um, we had gone up to Clay, they have one. They do not have the single tire rear steer on it, but it has a twenty-six second setup. So, the second you get out of that truck, twenty-six seconds, you have the outriggers out and down, and that thing is ready to fly. That's all it takes. And then it's ninety seconds. We had it at the, out to the side, get in the bucket, it's ninety seconds from there to fully extended, straight up. Hundred foot. And it was very secure, no sway, I mean, very, it was, I, I felt more comfortable in that than either of our trucks we have, to be honest with you. And I, I went up and flew it with the gentleman up at Pierce. So, it was very comforting. Not a lot of electronics, like the T-Rex. It's back to the basics. There's some electronics, everything has electronics today, however, back to basics.
Uh, I like that. Can't beat the basics, right?
No way.
Alright, Mr. Jap, do you have any questions? No, you getting a good information?
Well.
It's all, well, that's what life is, a learning experience. Alright, thank you.
So like I stated, they're gonna meet tomorrow, the truck committee, hopefully as many of them as possible, um, to discuss the, the recent stuff, but they, they were really sold on that mid-mout until this recent issue came up. I just wanna give you, uh, the information that there are, you've asked before, trucks are out there and available. I just wanna make sure that I, you know, did that research, which we did. There's a possible truck out there that could work. I'm gonna leave it, you know, the truck committee is, that's what they were designed to do, is to determine what's the best thing for the city, so.
Okay, uh, we, we definitely appreciate that, and I think that, uh, the people that will be able to watch this on, uh, alcohol appreciate it also. So, I'm definitely not, I wanna see us get something here, and, uh, I just, we have to figure out money-wise. And, uh, we might have to de-obligate some money.
And just so, I know Councilman Don Presbunsky asked me last, at the council meeting, right before we, we, uh, finished, the price on the mid-mout, it was roughly two-point-three, I believe, million for the mid-mout. So it's, it's, it is a little bit more than the rear mount, but you're looking at either two million or two-point-three.
Do they give you a discount for ordering, uh, and giving them a, a down payment?
Uh, they will, uh, actually, uh, any money you put towards the truck prior to, uh, picking it up. Well, no, uh, you'll get locked in as soon as I sign that purchase agreement and give them a P.O. I don't have to have any money for that. But, say if we go with the mid-mout, it takes three years to build it. You can make payments, you, you, the payments you make up to that, they'll give you a cash discount on that payment when you, when you make it. You know, you can make a payment every year, so you don't have as much at the end, and they will give you a cash discount. I, I didn't ask them what the number was, I, I can get that information, but I, I don't know if it's substantial, I really don't know, I didn't ask them.
Okay.
So.
Three years toward it.
Thirty-six to forty-two months, he said, for that mid-mout. Uh, Clay Fire, over South Bend is the one he referred to, they ordered it probably, I'm guessing two and a half years ago. It, it just keeps increasing the amount of length that it takes to, to get a truck now.
They have it, they have it or no?
They got it, yeah, we went over and looked at it, and they flew it for us. Um, they've had it in service for about two months. So they, you know, they're just still getting, you know, used to it, um. They, when they ordered it two and a half years ago, I believe, I, I think it was two years ago, I can't remember for sure, it was one-point-seven million. Two years later, now they're two-point-three, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make a comment, right? Yeah, I just wanna thank Chief, Captain, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Brewder.
These guys are the ones that are putting the time in.
Yeah, right, and, you know, I know we were pushing the truck committee, get it put together, and this is, uh, you know, why we wanted to do that, so we know where we stood, what we gotta do moving forward. And we're gonna get the best equipment that the fire department needs, and move forward from there, once we get the information that you guys, uh, bring back to us, and then we'll make a decision, and, uh, go from there. So, thank you. Well, uh, I, uh, I definitely wanna sit down with the committee on looking at, with, to get a, uh, or some kind of replacement schedule, and, uh, and with you and Frank on what we're gonna do.
What's a T-Rex?
With, uh, T-Rex, with, uh, our legal staff, and, uh, you know, I just.
I, I know it's short notice, but, uh, they're meeting tomorrow at one o'clock at the admin building, the truck committee.
Okay.
So you're, you're invited.
Hey, I, I appreciate that. Um, Does anybody have any, anything else? And, like I said, uh, we're gonna have to, I think you need to get some numbers together on, uh, what we're doing here in the near future, for the, uh, uh, finance committee. You know, cause if we're gonna do it, if we are going to get in a replacement, we need to dedicate funds. Now, so you don't have to have a, a big, uh, discussion later. Well, I guess we're done, Don's leaving. Thanks, Don.
Oh.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.